Call meeting to order. We don't have an agenda.
No, we don't. Five session.
Five of five. Wait, let me grab it.
There is no agenda.
No, we do. We have the session.
We have an agenda.
Well, there's there's stuff.
Yeah, there's stuff. That's what I thought.
All right. I'll call this meeting to order at five of five. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Arvizo?
Yes. Here, sorry.
All right, we're approved next, next meeting. Okay, Commissioner Morio?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca?
Present.
Vice Chair Gonzalez, absent. And Chair Hernandez is absent as well.
Can we begin, please, with the presentation of the study session?
Yes, so we do have a study session today that it and we haven't had one in a little while. This is on accessory dwelling units because we are looking to amend our code. Our existing accessory dwelling units are a little bit outdated. I don't know how many years maybe Adrian can specify that. But there's been a lot of legislation recently that from the state. And so we need to be more compliant so that we can convey that to the public. So I'll pass it on to our associate planner, Adrian.
Awesome. Thank you. Again, sorry for being a little late today. But I'll be presenting the item here today for the planning commission study session. This is regarding zero eight twenty two dash ten. Based three streamlined code amendments to amend, amend city eighteen regulations. And a bit of background, so on December fourteen, twenty twenty two. Staff posed to council work program to update the city of Coachella municipal codes or any ordinance. To, among other things, add new changes required by state law. Great. The proposed A new ordinance amendment would be to update the ordinance with new changes required by state law and updates recommended by staff. So before I go over the amendments to the A D U ordinance. I did want to speak on, you know, if you are coming into the city, what is, you know, you don't know. You may not know how to like get an A D U rate. What is the process for an A D U? So there's two types of processes for an A D U. So as it is today, right, our existing A D U regulations. There's a building permit only A D U. So that involves converted on a single family lot, limited detached on single family lot. Converted on multi-family lot and also limited detach on multi-family lot. So if it's in within those four categories, it's under a building permit only A D U. Then there's the other category, A D U permit A D U. A D Us that don't comply with the requirements to the left would go under that, those standards, right? And they must comply with local objective standards. So that's how the names are right now. But as staff, we're looking to update the names. Statutory regulated A D Us and then locally regulated A D Us. So I think it gives a bit more clarity on at least the ones on the left are ordained by state law, right? And the ones on the right give the city more flexibility to regulate those agents. So again, four different types of A D U on that first category, and so I'll go over those. So under statutory A D U, you can have an A D U converted on a single family lot. So you can have one converted A D U and one J A D U. So within a proposed or existing single family dwelling, you can have. So I'm showing you on the second time there. There's a home, right? I want to convert eight hundred square feet of that home to be an A D U. You can do that under this section. And it can also be within an existing accessory structure, maybe you only. And they may also add hundred fifty square feet for ingress and egress. So in the image there, I show that there is, you know, you know, I have a single family home. I want to convert some of that space, maybe the living room, right? Turn that into an eight hundred square foot A D U. Let's say I want to do it in the second story, right? Second story of my home. I can add a hundred fifty square feet for stairs to have access to that view, right? And this is all within the existing single family home. There's no expansion other than the hundred fifty square feet of stairs. And you could also have the J D. So that gives you two opportunities for the A D U. And converting portions of the hall. So that's one, the first form of the A D U. And again, I'm showing you the two that's the way to use that. Here I'm showing a single family home. And again, you can convert space. So I want to do with a thousand square foot A D U in the single family home. You'd be able to do that, right? In this example, I have an existing patio, right? That's an existing permitted patio. You can convert that into A D U space. And then again, have another existing patio detached behind my home. Convert that into A D U space, right? And the main takeaway here is this is existing accessory structures or your existing home that you can convert into your A D U. The next type of A D U is limited detachment on single family lot. So you can have one detached A D U in addition to one J A D U. So here on the example to the right is the one detached A D U that you may want to build, right? It would need to meet four foot side and rear yard setback requirements. And it has to be eight hundred square feet or small. And it would have to meet high requirements and it would not have to meet the local standards which are separate, right? So that's an example of, you know, five hundred square foot A D U in the backyard, right? Other examples, in the front yard, you can have a, you know, as the example here, four hundred seventy seven square foot A D U. And in the backyard, you can have the eight hundred square foot A D U. As long as you're meeting the setback requirements, you'd be able to do that, right? And so this is a new, like a new stretch, right? You'd be able to do that. And it does have to be detached. I didn't want to specify. It has to be detached from the line. So the next type of A D U is converted on a multi-family lot. So here I show four flats, right? This is an existing four flats. And you can convert at least, at least one converted A D U is allowed. And up to a maximum quantity of twenty five percent of existing multi-family dwelling units. So I didn't make a mistake here. I only wanted to show one. But because there's four units, you could do up to twenty five percent. So you'd be able to do one of those units, right? If this was like an eight flats, right, one building, eight units, you could do it. So it'd be twenty five percent of the existing amount of units to be able to convert things that is not. Not being used for living space, right? So in this example, I showed the garages. It's not being used as living space. You can convert that into A D Us. And then the fourth, the last category here is the limited detached on multi-family lot. So you can perform with a proposed multi-family dwelling up to two detached A D Us. So let's say I'm proposing an eight flats project, right? You can have two detached A D Us with a proposal. For existing multi-family dwellings, you can have up to eight detached A D Us. Or a quantity equal to number of primary dwellings in the unit, whichever is fewer. So if you had like an eight flats, right, you could do. You could do it equal to the number that you have, right? So eight, eight units, then you can have the detached units. And it would have to meet the high requirement side and we are setbacks in four feet. And here's an example, right? Having four, four multi-family dwelling units, right? And then you'd be able to do the detached units there. So this would allow you to have detached units. And so these are our amendments to statutory regulated A D Us. So the existing ordinance allows up to two detached A D Us on an existing multi-family lot. And the updated ordinance allows up to two detached A D Us on a proposed multi-family lot. And up to eight A D U units on existing multi-family lot or to exist with units on that. So the existing A D U ordinance, as it is today, right, you could only do up to. But now, because of the requirements of state law, we would have to allow up to the eights. And you go over the locally regulated A D U. So we already went through the statutory regulated A D Us. So now we're going into the other segment. What if my A D U doesn't fall under any of those categories? You still be able to go through the locally regulated A D U process. So this would allow, for example, attached A D Us. And it would allow up to a thousand square foot A D Us. So in the statutory regulated A D Us, you could only do the hundred square feet. But through locally regulated A D U standards, you'd be able to be able to go up to a thousand. And it would have to meet much more requirements, right? Has to meet size requirements, parking requirements, architectural requirements, historical protections, a lot of stories. So even though, again, you go through the first standards, if you don't, you have to meet these standards, but they're a lot more stringent, right? And here's some examples of what you can do under these standards, which you could have in the other standards, right? You could do an attachment A D U, be able to do that, and you can give you up to a thousand square feet. And our limits to the locally regulated A D Us are, as it, as the ordinance exists right now, right? Before the amendments, there's two different types of permits. There's a building permit and an A D U permit. We as staff decided to consolidate that, so it's only building permit only, so it's easier, you know, for city staff. And for the public to process, right? And what if you submit a permit for the long A D U type? We don't want them to take more time on it. So it's only one permit. That will be the process, right? We did set a fifteen foot front yard setback standard for local, locally regulated A D Us. We are removing architectural requirement for stream. So right now, our A D U ordinance requires landscaping, fencing, or privacy glass. But we're moving that requirement because with the fifteen foot setback requirement. You know, that privacy requirement isn't required for a single family homes, which have a fifteen foot setback requirement. So it really doesn't make sense to have it here, right? We're also removing the landscape requirements. Because again, we're trying to move the A D U process along, right? And for any landscaping, it has to go through a separate planning approval. And also approval from the utilities department. That's typical. So we're removing those requirements, right? So it's easier for them to get an A D U. Required by, we are providing historical protections, right? So A D Us within six hundred feet of a California register of historic resources to be located so as not to be visible from any public right away. And we did include parking requirements. So the parking requirements that we added for these local, locally regulated A D Us. Is just to match what's already required throughout the city, right? So if you want to do a, if you want to do a driveway, right? You're going to have to provide a driveway that leads to a fence and then a parking space in the backyard, right? So we put those parking requirements for an A D U. And amendments to general A D U requirements. So we are requiring rent reporting. So when you submit for an A D U, you would need to put the amount of rent that you plan to. Charge for the A D U, right? So this helps with our reporting requirements to H C V for affordable housing, right? And these are the requirements, state required height requirements. So sixteen feet is the maximum height requirement for an A D U. But there are exceptions. So eighteen feet in height maximum would be allowed if within a half mile walking distance from a major transit stop. Twenty feet to accommodate a roof pitch. And A D Us attached to a primary dwelling, maybe up to twenty five feet in height or the height of the underlying zone. So in our single family zoning standard, thirty five. So it's whichever is less, so twenty five would stand. Our existing height requirements allow up to sixteen feet. A second story or two-story attached A D U may not see the height of the primary dwelling. And a detached A D U may not exceed one story. And also unpermitted A D Us and J D U constructed before twenty twenty would be allowed. Get permitted, right? So let's say, build an A D U in twenty eighteen, I don't want to get a permit for it, right? So because it's before twenty twenty, you have a path to get that permitted, right? As long as we in California, health and safety standards. This was already a requirement of our code, but the state changed it from before twenty eighteen to before twenty twenty. They've just changed to that, right? But this was already existing in our code. And that's the end of my presentation. Let me know if you have any questions regarding A D Us. And also, I believe Todd Leishman with P B N K is also here. Who can answer questions regarding these. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any, do we have a number on how many, how many actual permits we've?
Issued.
Issued on the A D Us as we, we offered the free plans.
I don't have those numbers on. You happen to know, Gabriel, by?
More than two.
More than two, for sure.
Well, that's a very incentive for a community, I think, because. It's a big incentive in the city for actually pursuing those funds too.
Right. Yeah, I provide that information. This ordinance would have to go back to. And this is just a study session, so we'll have to go back to kind of permissions. So I'll provide that information.
The, the other thing too that I, that I, I would like to take, because I, and again, I know we've done this for such a long time, but. When it comes to parking, I think that's something also, I know that's been communication and. Did we, as a commission, put some type of standard? When it comes to that, when someone is, wants to, I guess my question is, when one wants to build an A D U, but not necessarily have the. The space for the additional parking, right? So how, how is, how, how is a city willing to adjust that code or find other, other ways? So that, that individual is able to build the A D U, but potentially have that parking space somewhere else? Or how is that possible, you know? Because I'm thinking about the name, like you just said, you know, you, you expressed parking the car in the backyard, having, what if the, the house only has, you know. Certain amount of, 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 of space and not necessarily the space for, for that additional vehicle. What, what, what are other cities done or what, what are, what are we thinking about that?
I thought I had made a recommendation previously that, that a house that does have an A D U. That you paint the curb a certain color and it dedicates that, the parking space for that particular house. But I know there was some opposition to that, but I thought it was just a way of accommodating the parking space. For that particular house and it has an A D U, has paid the fees and. So, you know, because some of these neighborhoods, it's chaos just to, you know, it's a real challenge, you know, to find parking in your own space, you know?
Right, right.
And then if people have, across the street have, you know, multiple families living there. And it becomes a big issue, you know, so I thought the way to alleviate that problem would be to, to dedicate that parking, you know, have a certain color parking space. And then just dedicate that space to that particular dwelling, fact that they're paying property taxes and. And I pay the fees for an A D U. So I don't know, maybe something to consider in, in the future, but I thought it was a good idea.
Um, whatever, for whatever we consider a parking space, does it have to be, for example, if they have the driveway?
Right.
Let's say the driveway at the moment is a cement driveway. Would they have to add that additional space based on the language that's there right there? Would they have to add the additional space as another cement driveway? Or can it be any other material?
It could be any other material. So it could be like pavers, right? So just to clarify, right? So if you're under the statutory regulated A D U requirements, or you're converting existing space or adding detached then eight hundred square feet. There is no parking requirement. So you wouldn't be part of the parking. However, if it doesn't fit those standards, you're going to have to go through locally regulated A D U standards. So something like this, right? You're going to attach a view for a thousand square feet in you. You're going to have to do the parking.
Right. So, so then, so then at the moment, really, the only people that can do that thousand feet. Is people that may have like a rancher, right? There's something big, right? Not someone that lives at Tierra, that's all like myself. They can't do that, right? But what if someone wants to do something? Again, I'm just thinking out loud, right? So, so based on the regulations at the moment, right? Something like a thousand foot, uh, square foot A D U, it wouldn't be technically allowed because the space is not there. The space might be there for the actual A D U, but not necessarily for the parking requirements. Is that correct?
Right, right. They wouldn't be able to because they don't meet our parking requirements. And what we've recommended is just to keep it the same, right? But we could always provide different parking requirements for A D U specifically, right? Some to provide, you know, so, so some suggestions of what that could be, right?
Can we maybe get an opinion from our legal counsel, Henry, on if we were to?
Regarding the parking, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was, I was actually looking that, that up right now. So there's very specific instances when you can regulate the parking for A D Us. So, I mean, I'm not prepared to give you those, those specifics that there is. Yeah, but once, once we bring that back, we can provide you when the city can look at those parking requirements for A D Us. But from my understanding, that is not something the city can consider when approving an A D U. Is, is there sufficient parking or not?
I just, you know, you're looking at different options of how we can leave the parking situation. Could I know? You know, some people really get into, you know.
Makes sense. Yeah, and the state, and the state has kind of imposed themselves when it comes to these A D U requirements on the local agencies. So it's very specific when you can look at those parking requirements. So that's something that I can talk with Gabriel later.
Just so you know, your colleague is on the call too.
Okay.
So, Todd Leishman.
Yeah, we can get an opinion maybe down the road and.
Yeah, and if, and if Todd, if, if Todd is on the line, then he can, he can jump in and give you those specifics.
Yeah.
So even, so even along those same lines, and I'm not going to say the neighborhood, right? I've been driving with the boys because of the Christmas lights, right? And I, I literally have seen houses where like, within their, 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 their property, right? Like eight cars, right? In that property, right? So again, it's their property, I understand, but. How does the city regulate that, right? Or do we as a city have any say in that? Does that make sense? Or even some of the, the new neighborhood across the street from, from La Colonia, right? There, there are some homes there. The big houses, right? There's like eight cars, right? In some of those areas, right? So I don't think they're having parties on Wednesday night, right? So technically, they're living there, right? So then, tho- those are things, again, I know we're probably getting in that rabbit hole about parking, right? But if we're stringing on A D Us, but then where, where, where does, where does that, where does that conversation start? To kind of know and as a city, you know, obviously it is a problem. But how, how are we mindful of who's taking advantage of that? And I'm just thinking aloud, right? Not advantage, but it's just the reality, right?
Well, to add to that, I know that there's like parking citations that are handed out. And so down the line, it is going to be.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement. And so like, is there going to be a special privilege allowed for people who applied through the city? Went through all of the process, got an A D U. And the time comes when the street cleaner comes around and there's no worker in the perfect car, right? Well, they did follow all of the rules. Should they have to?
So let me throw a wrench in the conversation. What about for those homes that already have those granny houses? Like those houses in front of La Colonia, they already have a granny house. Some of the Colonia homes have granny houses where they have open. I mean, there's plenty of communities with those A D Us already there. So why, you know, so it would, I mean, if we're going to be talking about it this now, we should have considered this. Or the other planning commissioners should have considered the parking situation then. So going back to your point about code enforcement, I think that's something that could be considered. We all know what the rules are, but you have tenants, you have people already living in these granny homes in the city of Coachella who have to move their car.
Yeah, the bottom line is that it's a, it's a problem across the city.
Yeah.
It's not one particular neighborhood.
And it's, no, exactly. But it's just an example, an example. So like, you know, it's already here. It's, so if, I don't know, I guess like ask of the commission what it sounds like. What are some options for parking? Or to some alternative, what are some solutions to prevent this? Because if we're allowing more homes in lots, that means our, our communities are going to get congested. And it's going to be more problem or issues maybe for code enforcement or just to manage it. So we want to be, you know.
Be mindful.
Force sight, yeah. Have a little bit of foresight of what to anticipate down the pipeline. Before it's a bigger issue.
You know, because it's, there's actually houses that have multi pens. You know, cause it's, uh, there's actually houses that have multi pens.
Yeah.
And it's pretty obvious with the parking situations now.
I didn't wanna say that, but thank you. That is the truth, that is the truth.
Five with all children.
A hundred percent, we all have a car.
Has a car, I mean.
Yeah.
I have a friend that, uh, that has his daughter in college, so when they don't come down from college, you know, they, there's really no place to park.
No, there isn't.
So they have to park down the street and then.
We like our big pens.
Street cleaning and all that, so it becomes a, you know.
I think a good way to approach it, whether it would be an issue or not, is to see how many ticket citation tickets is code enforcement giving out? When it comes to those, that parking.
That's a, that's a good.
Um, just to have some, some data to back that up, to see if it will become.
Maybe do a survey, because like, right now, what if code enforcement is underserved and they can't, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Build a foot traffic there, so maybe a survey.
Yeah, and, and, and again, I think as a commission, we're always thought about, how can we do better? This is not about pointing fingers or who's taking advantage, but I think, I think just, just being mindful of, of, of the situation. Because I, I have heard through individuals that wanna do these ADUs, that the parking has been one of those things that, well. You know, I, I, I just don't have the square footage, or I just not willing to do this, or I'm already.
We're, we're here now.
I'm, I'm, I'm already packed.
Look for solutions.
Exactly.
We gotta work together as a commission and whatever makes sense for, you know, across the borders.
Yeah, Commissioner, I would, I would think about that, um, I mean, some, I mean, I don't think any of these. Lot of examples show it on here, uh, but in the past, I think we might have shown an example. If you expanded a driveway, the only way you can have, the only way you can do a driveway in the city is if it leads to. Um, a covered, like parking space in a garage, right? And then the alternative is if you have a driveway that goes into your side yard. And that there's a gate there and that you can store the vehicle back there, that's the only way you can do it. Even though there's probably people that aren't storing the vehicle right, right there, they're probably parking in the front. You have to be able to do that, that's what the code says. And so everything relates to being able to go to either a covered spot or to something where it's hidden and screened behind. Uh, your front yard, your, your gate, right?
So then.
So, so you could think of alternatives to that, right? That, that may be the situation that we're in, is thinking about those alternatives, because um. I think the alternative could be like you expand the driveway, but doesn't need to lead into anything, right? But that also leads to other issues, right? There, um, the front yard, hard skate, and this is not really necessarily the driveways. Is the maximum, what, sixty percent?
Sixty percent.
So forty percent is left open, but that's not necessarily for parking. It could be for, for parking, uh, but if you dedicate that to parking, you want sixty percent of the, the, the hard skate. To be for parking, so these are things to think about and, and we could come back with some options based on your direction, right? If you want us to explore options outside of the regular parking space that leads to like a full garage. Or to the side yard, that's something that we could look at, and then we could compare it to what other cities allow. Uh, but I, from what I understand, at least from our valley cities, is that they're probably very restrictive. Um, so, but it would be good, I mean, I think maybe having some kind of table or comparison, what our surrounding cities do. Maybe with similar studies to Coachella that are, I mean, I think we've been pretty permissive of ADUs. So kinda seeing what, maybe what they've done.
Yeah.
We do allow for a lot smaller lot sizes than other cities as well, so that's gonna complicate things further. I mean, think about that, if you, if we allow four thousand square foot lots in some zones. I mean, those are gonna be skinny lots, right?
Yeah, we're creating a density issue there, so that's.
But we're also reacting to a growing issue, right?
Exactly.
People are now, I mean, it's a reality of us inflation and the times that we're in now, right? Trying to address that, um, and it's continues to come up. And here we are now having this discussion about the ADUs, where we probably should start looking at that. And not make it so restrictive for people to be able to have those driveways, um, is it gonna look pretty?
Kind of, yeah.
But uh, again, we are, we have to adjust um to the times that we're in today.
I think the side yard is, so that might make sense. If you put a gate that's basically, you know, obscuring the cars in the back, it might be a way of addressing the problem. If the people, if you have the space, you know? I know we promote the, you know, motorhomes and, you know, whatever, uh, type of vehicles, but. You might have to make, make an exception to, to address this problem.
You could already do that, right?
Chair and Commission.
Covered with the gate.
Yeah, yeah.
Parking space.
Well, I think that's, we, you know, we need to promote it, that way people are aware of it, cause I, I talked to a couple of different friends of mine. Where they didn't wanna move forward with actually building that, and they didn't have a, a motorhome or a mobile home, or, I mean, a motorhome or. Present type of vehicle to park on the side of, I, I understood it was restricted specifically for that purpose. But if we allow the cars, I mean, I think it's a way that to alleviate the problem that, it's confronting us now.
It, it, it's one of the ways to do it, but it only works if you have the setback to accommodate. So if you, I mean, even with ten feet on the side yard, it barely fits. Uh, some of the newer lots are gonna be five feet on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, uh, it'll work in, in some, some instances.
Well, but when I, you know, that they came to me and they approached me about it, uh, there's plenty of space, right? It's one of the new houses.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but uh, you know, they didn't wanna move forward, cause they had it, talked to people at the city, and they said, oh, no, they, you can't, you can't do that, so. I mean, that's, I think it should be an option for, for the residents.
Yeah.
So then could staff go back and just take all these uh suggestions or recommendations? Like you said, create a crosswalk, like a table that indicates, you know, the different modalities or options available based on the size of the lots? The new lots, the old lots, that kind of thing, just to see how we can manage that, just.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Is that possible?
Yeah, and I think Adrian did a good job trying to lay out the.
Yeah, yeah, this is great, no, a hundred percent.
We'll try to do that as well, so you can kind of visualize what that could look like, I guess, based on a comparison. Cause if we do a comparison, it's all text, you can't see it, um, we'll try to translate into a.
Yeah.
Visual.
Visuals on the screen.
We do, we do have a hand raised by Todd.
Um, our, our, we do have our other BBNK attorney on the remote.
Okay.
Um, and uh, I, I've worked with them a, a lot, uh, ADUs in the past. So uh, just in case you have questions, and it sounds like maybe he has to add to the conversation.
Uh, go ahead, Todd.
Chair and Commission, can you hear me?
Yeah, a, a little low, but.
A little low?
No, no, that's a little better.
We can, we can hear you better now, yeah.
Okay, I don't know if I can speak with a deeper voice, but I'll try. Um, I just wanted to mention in this discussion about parking, that the state ADU law. Really favors getting rid of parking. Uh, it, it says that a city at most can require one parking space for an ADU. One off-street parking space for an ADU, but there are several, as Henry intimated, there are several exceptions to that. Meaning, and a city cannot even require that one parking space for the ADU. If it's within a half mile walking distance of public transit, or if it's within an architecturally or historically significant historic district. Or where the ADU is part of the primary residence or an accessory structure. Um, there are a couple of other exceptions that don't apply as often, but you, you kinda see where this is going. Um, the general, at most, you can require one off-street parking space, but there are several exceptions to that. And that's, that's the law, but the law also allows a city to always be more generous. Right? The, the city is always within its authority to be more generous to an ADU, and what does that, what does that mean? It means you don't even require the one space. Outside of these exceptions, so I, I heard several things from the commission, I heard some discussion of how. Um, parking is, um, you know, having people park on the street can be tight. I also heard and, and having to, having to provide a parking space off-street is sometimes an impediment to the development of ADUs. Um, and I also heard other people say that it might be good to not require the parking in more situations. And that's fine, the city, you can always recommend to the council. That the city not requires even that one parking space. Uh, outside of the exceptions. So there's not a, there's not a lot of situations where you can require the one parking space. But you can always, what, you know, get rid of that requirement then too, if you want.
Yeah, I think, I think that particular law, the state law applies to, you know, to big cities where. You have a sophisticated public transportation system, uh, you know, where I think we're a little different than a big city situation. But, you know, that's why.
Well, well, the exceptions are what they are, the only real question for you and the council as a policy matter is, do you want to be more generous than state law? And require less parking than, than the default?
Yeah, cause maybe my question is, how many people maybe make a decision not to build the ADU because they don't, they're not in compliance for the parking, right? And I don't know. The city, you know?
I don't know, we would know that answer, but I, I think, I think uh Todd brings up a good point. And maybe Adrian can speak to this, cause Adrian worked with, with Todd on the code amendments. Is that I think what's being presented to you is what we can actually um enforce. Based on what the state law allows to be somewhat strict, um, and the planning commission could choose to be. More flexible than the state law.
Mm-hmm.
That's your choice at the end of the day, uh, but the reason we'll probably be more conservative on it. Is considering that there's equality of life issues. Um, and it's, and it, it's really up to the planning commission and council to see if they wanna be more conservative on that. And some of these issues are important to, to protect, right? Quality of life issues. Or maybe it doesn't matter that much, right? Maybe there's other goals that the planning commission has, uh, maybe that align with, with the state.
And, and I, and I think with, for me, the, the, the biggest thing is, what, the point that we were making is that some of these homes already have that granny home. Those challenges are already happening, so, you know, you know what I'm saying? Wh- where's, where's, where's the, the penum, right? And I think we're all open to that conversation, right? Okay, so some of them are kind of being grandfathered in, right? Because the home's already there, and home came with that, but yet someone, people wanna build something, but yet they're not building cause they have this requirement, so.
But for, for the locally one.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that, I'm, I'm talking specifically for that one, cause I think that's, that's, that's the main one that I know, I've been reading. And other people have shared with me that obviously they want a bigger home, cause if, if it's a bigger square footage, what does that mean? More, more capital, right? They can charge more, right? So the, the, the reality is, 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 is a lot of these, a lot of individuals are building this as a, a side business, it's just a fact. So, so, and yeah, I, I, I get it, but it is a business, it is a business, right?
Chair and, and Commission, one more thing I might add, um, earlier I heard some, some discussion of. Seeing seven or eight cars parked on a lawn, um, and what do you do about that? That really is independent of ADUs, the city ha- can have rules about where off-street parking can occur. Uh, there's nothing about having an ADU that would require the city to make an exception to that. If the city has a rule that says nobody gets to park cars on their lawn, then that's fully enforceable whether or not they have an ADU.
Council, and we actually have that in our, our city ordinance, right? We can't park, so we're already more, you know, covered, yeah, we cannot, so we, we're, we're good on that part. Okay, so I think we have homework for you. But I mean, yeah, relate this to the council, right?
Even though it's a study session, although agenda says public hearing, so we could just see if there's any public comment.
Sure, we see if there's any public comment.
We open up the public comment, uh. Five forty-three?
Perfect.
Anybody raise your hand, like to address the commission?
I, I see no hands online.
Okay, goes the public comment at five forty-four. Go on to the next item.
Okay, are you, you guys done with discussion? So I'll make sure.
Anybody have any comments?
No.
No. Thank you, counsel, appreciate it.
Thanks, Todd, for joining us.
Thanks, Todd.
Yeah.
Bet, always a pleasure, see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can close the session, or is there something else?
I think that's it.
That was only items, so you could.
Okay, we can.
So you'll have a little break.
Okay, at what time? At German at what?
German at uh, five forty-four.
Thank you.
Hey, keep your comments yourself, it's been recorded. Time is six oh one, we'd like to uh begin our meeting, I wanna welcome each and every one of you to our scheduled planning commission meeting for December eighteen, twenty twenty-four. The time is six oh one, and I would like to call this um, meeting to order, uh, and I wanna ask.
Vice Chair, Mr. Gonzalez, Chair, if you can please face enough. Please believe it's.
Right to regions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the power. In the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, can we get a roll call, please?
Uh, Commissioner Ramirez.
Present.
Commissioner Arvizo.
Here.
Commissioner Murillo.
Present.
Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Present.
And Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir, present here, uh.
Just also alternate Commissioner, uh, Fonseca.
Real quick, can we get the agenda on this week?
Are you? You have it up?
Put it on you.
Okay, perfect. All right, moving over to the approval of, uh, the agenda at this time, the commission may announce any items being pulled. Um, from the agenda and plan will continue to another day, or request the moving of an item on the agenda. Can you get approval of the agenda motion?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Can we get a second?
One second.
We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Commissioner Arvizo.
Yes.
Commissioner Murillo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir, uh, motion carries, and approval of meeting minutes, item number one, planning commission meeting minutes for November twentieth. Twenty twenty-four, can we get a, a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I'll motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes of November twentieth.
One second, that motion.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Commissioner Arvizo.
Yes.
Commissioner Murillo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir, Mr. Director, any written communications?
Uh, none from staff chair.
All right, moving over to uh, public comments for non-agenda items, the public may address the commission. On any items of interest to the public that is not on the agenda, but is within the subject matter jurisdiction of thereof. Please limit your comments to three minutes, the time is six oh three, like to open up the public comments. Anybody online like to address the commission?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, anybody present that would like to address the commission? And seen at the R nine, like to close it at six oh four, awesome, moving over. Over to reports and requests, Mr. Director.
There are no reports from staff.
Perfect, thank you so much, now moving over to non-hearing items, item number two, the library annex, conceptual design, Mr. Director.
Thank you, Chair, and I believe, um, are you doing the intro to this? Okay, our city engineer, Andrew Simmons will be presenting this item, perfect, thank you.
Hello.
And there should be a presentation.
Um, yes, if we could advance Shelley to.
I think I heard her.
Yep, I, hi, Andrew, can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and share my screen, if that's okay.
Um, well, let me.
Whenever you're ready.
Um, so we brought the library annex to you previously and went over a couple of concepts. Um, and then with working with staff and working with the architect. Um, I know one of the primary conversations that we had at that meeting was kind of about the overall cost and how to deliver. Um, a project that's going to fit within the overall budget that we have in the grand. Uh, so we have worked with the architect and we've made some modifications, we've.
We've come up with the final design that will fit within the overall budget of the grant.
Nice.
And while also still being able to maintain a taller feature in front. From the staff and the architect's side, we all felt it was very important to, maintain that taller feature, just so we have that visibility from Sixth Street. Uh, we really want to have that, um, architectural draw. Um, and we have modified our presentation and our architect will be giving a presentation to show you some of the modifications we've made. And she'll kind of go into detail, some of the things we've done in order to make sure we control those costs. So we can deliver this project on budget.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Uh, and our architect is Shelley.
All right, I'll go ahead and share. Okay, are you able to see my screen?
Yeah, Shelley.
All right. Okay, so, um, you'll recognize maybe this presentation from before. But as we move into the body of the presentation, you'll see that we've made a few modi- modifications. And as Andrew said, um, we did some design work uh, in plan, uh, you might notice that taller tower entry piece that he mentioned before. And, um, previously that was a conditioned space. And what we've done is we've, uh, made that an exterior vestibule that's not conditioned, but still does provide space for shade, um, for people that are waiting to enter into the building. And it also acts as a lantern and entry marking point uh, for the main entrance to the building. Uh, additionally, you'll see on the plan that in this study hall area, we made sure to add shelving because it's really important to the space that there be access to books and all of these different program areas for the space. So, um, we went ahead and did that. And then additionally, uh, you'll see here that we've got the food lab. And we wanted to make sure that it was clear that, uh, the city intends to put, uh, an RFP out for this use in the space, um, similar to what was done for the Sixth Street coffee shop. And, um, I think that pretty much does it here for the planned view of the space. And I will, um, click over here for you. This is, uh, the modified layout that shows how the space might be used in an actual presentation setting. So using the stage for either as a, as a foreground to a presentation on a screen or else some kind of, um, actual play or, um, musical performance. So, uh, all kinds of options there for that. As we move into the renderings for the building, you'll see that we have maintained this tower element. And additionally, you'll see these openings that were previously glazed, which are now just openings into the space that also allow, uh, uh, some cooling for the space, that kind of cooling tower element where we'll create high openings that, that kind of help convection, so that the space will stay a little naturally cooler. This is a night view of the space. And, uh, also incorporating what we hope, uh, will be an LED screen here. Uh, the, that LED screen will be a bid alternate in the package. What we will include in the base documents is all the electrical infrastructure that would be required to power uh, this large LED screen. So that in the future, um, when that's funded or if, uh, we are uh, fortunate enough to have this fit into our initial, uh, our initial budget, uh, it's ready to go. Uh, one other thing I should add is that if, uh, there's no LED screen here, uh, initially this could be a place for another mural. Uh, or perhaps, uh, a wall for projection of movies or something like that, evening movies. This is the parking lot side of the building that, um, is the senior center parking area. You'll see that we've greatly streamlined the aesthetics of the side of the building. The previous iteration for this, uh, this scheme had a lot of vertical screening elements here to create shade, uh, in front of the windows. So what we've done here is push the windows back so that we create a, a bit of a a shadow here and some shade on this glass, but left it open with some landscape in front to protect that area. This is the night view of that. So this is the, uh, the other side of the building that, uh, you'll see we've included a mural. This is one of the other sides that previously had a lot of, uh, vertical panel, vertical decorative panels along this side of the building that we stripped away to open up some area for a mural. And additionally, you'll see these, uh, canopy eyebrow elements that tie to the front entry tower and also give a nod to the, um, awnings that are existing over at the library building across the street. Here's a night view. And another angle, you'll notice that this is a beautiful artwork by Frida Kahlo. Um, we do love this image. We, I was telling Andrew how cool it is that her eyebrows align with the eyebrows over the entry doors. But since this is a copyrighted piece of artwork, um, we cannot, uh, we cannot use that. And so, um, part of what Andrew mentioned was that, uh, the city team will be working with an arts, the Arts Commission during the construction documents process to identify a mural for the space of the building uh, that, uh, that we wouldn't have a copyright issue with. Uh, one of the other things I should point out is part of what we, one of the other things we did to save money, uh, in this plan is you'll notice, if I let me go back to this view, you'll see that this entry point of the building is pushed in a bit deeper. And what that allowed us to do was, uh, to provide the access to the electrical room that's inside of the building from this alcove, rather than having to create access on the back side yard of the building that would require site work and some steps to get up to the floor level of the building. So by pushing this back and, uh, adding the door here where we already have a landing, that, that will save us some money as well. And here we have some reference images for what's happening inside. So the fun stuff, uh, uh, things that happen in the maker's space. Um, there could be 3D printing, there could be, uh, workshops for, uh, paper making and other types of, uh, collage or things like that. We also have the ceramics and textile maker's space that could be used for weaving, um, other kinds of sewing, things like that, along with ceramics, of course. And then the media lab, so we could have a little recording studio in there that provides for some, um, soundproof, either podcasting or, um, recording of your own music, as well as computers and things like that with green screens. These are some images, some inspiration images for, uh, the typical setting in the community room where we have bookshelves, mobile bookshelves and seating, um, that could be taken out and stored for other uses. This is some inspiration for the corridor that leads to the back of the space where the, where the maker's space is and the ceramic studio. And the intent there is to provide a space for a rotating gallery of local artwork or, um, community-made artwork, things like that. And some more images for the presentation setting of the community room where it could be modified to provide a banquet setting or some other kind of presentation. Maybe everybody wants to get together and, uh, watch a football, uh, soccer, soccer match or something like that. Could be a fun, fun thing. And then we have some images of the, uh, proposed study hall, which would be out, uh, adjacent to the food lab where we would have, uh, bookshelves and spaces for common study. Anything else you wanted to add, Andrew?
Um, no, I guess we would just like to open up to the planning commission. Any questions you guys have relative to some of the changes we made and some of the, you know, design decisions that we're, uh, trying to advance?
Awesome, thank you so much, Mr. Senior here, and thank you so much, Shelley, for your presentation was excellent. Um, open up, um, this dais here, and we can start with Commissioner Ramirez.
Sure, thank you, Chair. So, uh, um, you know, we've chatted this week, so I just wanted to like, uh, share a little bit of the notes that we discussed with the, with the other commissioners. So every room will have books, that's part of the deal, right? That every room will have books?
Yeah, as part of the library grant, um, all of the spaces need to incorporate those library aspects. Um, so we did modify some of the doors, some of the entries, uh, from the previous element to make more room for bookshelves, just so we make sure we're fully compliant with the aspects of the grant implication.
And then the other part is, I'm going back, Shelley mentioned that the food lab is going to be open for bid for an operator, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, it could be, it's gonna, so it's basically a leased space in that, or like someone to come in and have coffee, sandwiches and all that stuff, right?
Yeah, so, um, we'll put that out as a, um, as an RFP, and then we'll also have to work with the, um, library grant services, how that would, would work. Uh, potentially it would also be able to be used as a food lab, so, um, you might be able to have, uh, classes or other things. So it could be, um, like most of the spaces in the library, the intent is to make it look like functional.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, we do want that to be a, um, a leased space that does provide some commercial aspect. For the, you know, regular business on the annex as well.
Awesome. That, and the other comment I just wanted to add is, um, um, the, the LED, so it's just, that's separate from the grant and that, you know, if we get an LED TV there, we get it, whatever, that's separate from the grant monies, right?
Well, the LED could cover in the, there's nothing in the ground that would prohibit us from putting that up there. Uh, because it is a relatively high-cost item, we're estimating in the, you know, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar range to actually install that TV. Um, when we put it out to bid, we'll have that as a bid alternate. Um, so if our total project comes in, um, at a low enough cost and there's available budget, then we would include that right from the beginning, so that'd be a city council decision whether or not to include that at alternate. If the project is a little bit over budget, then that's, you know, kind of the low-hanging fruit that maybe we would, um, defer to a different time. We could seek a, we would be fully ready to go, we'd have all the electrical, fully wired for a future LED, and then potentially we could, um, have a partnership with a, a business or something where, uh, someone could sponsor that, uh, in order to have that put in as a separate item. Uh, so we're kind of using that as, um, you know, as a little bit of leverage in order to make sure that we can control the budget and keep the budget on, on track.
Perfect, and last comment, um, because it's a full demo and not a renovation, because it was, it would be most cost-effective to have, you know, everything built completely new. Are we doing the ten percent or fifteen percent contingency of the budget for those unfortunate things that might occur during the build?
Um, we haven't, uh, set like an exact budget, so once we have the, um, once we have direction to go with a final design element, uh, we'll come up with the full estimate with all the items. Um, typically on a project like this, we would go with the higher contingency amount. Um, when we do street projects or things where there's less anticipation of change orders, we can go with a lower amount, but I would anticipate a contingency in fifteen percent range.
Awesome, thanks. Any further questions?
No, just the grounding, they're gonna ground some poles, just, so that was the other thing, but that's all.
Awesome, Commissioner Ismael.
Um, no.
Awesome, okay. Uh, Commissioner, what do you?
No, just a great design and that's good. I look forward to it.
Awesome, Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Yeah, my only concern is, uh, so this canopy that you eliminated, glass and glazing on, is that a parapet on the, on the actual structure? You got a canopy on it? With the glazing, glazing was supposed to be?
Um, I guess that'd be a question for Shelley.
Yes, it's, it has a, a shade structure, a roof structure over the top.
My concern is it becomes a, a bird haven space, pigeons and all that, so. Is that a big portion of eliminating, uh, the glazing? Is there a particular reason for that or?
We could put the glazing back in, we just thought it might be a maintenance issue for cleaning, uh, keeping the windows clean. We're happy to put the glazing back in, it's really not a big cost. Uh, if it, if it feels better to you to keep the glass in there.
Well, my concern only is that, uh, it's gonna be a bigger ma- maintenance with all the birds.
There's pigeons that live in there. That's a very good point. I do make that, uh, I, I do make that observation with a lot of projects that we do. People say, oh, we know what Shelley's gonna say, are pigeons gonna sit there? So, uh, we're more than happy to put the glass back.
Yeah, it's an epidemic proportion, so. So I think that's, uh, that's my only concern, but I love the elevation and
Good job, thank you.
The layout, the way it flows and commend you guys for the work, nice.
Great, thank you.
It's my only concern, but I think the creation would, would make sense to put it back in.
Yeah.
You got it.
Thank you.
Awesome, and my, my, any other questions? All right, and my only comment is maybe perhaps the next rendering, if we can include, just some city branding, just to see what it would look like, right? What, 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 uh, you know, what we, if we named the building, um, right? What would that, what would we call it? Um, and or maybe consider naming, naming the building after, um, one of the most dynamic politicians the city has ever known. Um, Eduardo Garcia, um, who the assembly member, um, just completed his tenure. Uh, ten years of public service, right, and brought millions of dollars to the region and to our city. And, uh, this is one of, one of his projects, right? So kudos, you know, so this is the assembly member, and I just want to acknowledge him. Um, and it'd be right and fitting that, uh, we could name a building in his honor.
I would concur, I think that, um, Eduardo, I've seen him evolve his political career when he just started and he's one of the politicians I could honestly say that has done an amazing job. And, uh, that would be a nice acknowledgement from, I would definitely support that idea.
Alrighty, well, um, the commission would like to, uh, recommend that direct staff to continue preparing a complete development plan set for the staff, uh, or for the recommended design, right? A design, style design for library annex project staff, uh, will present a joint planning commission and city council hearing at a future date. So excellent, excellent job, and thank you for taking on the ideas and, and developing this beautiful concept. And I can't wait for, for this project to become a reality.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
On this one, uh, I should probably take a, a little bit then.
Okay.
To port it on.
Okay, so I just, I thought it was just staff recommendations, so.
With, with, um, because you guys also have some recommendations too, right? Um, if, if you wanna, well, we already took those down, um, but probably, um, advancing this project to council.
Okay.
And so getting a motion and.
Okay, well, I'd like to motion all that. Do you have to repeat everything you said, Henry?
No.
No.
All right, cool, give me a second.
Second.
Perfect, can we get a roll call?
Who is the first motion?
I got you.
Let me ask this to make a comment, uh, would those recommendations of actually naming the building be referred over to the council or?
Yeah, so I guess how this would go to probably your report, right? It would just be, this is the discussion of the planning commission had, and these were some of the recommendations discussed.
They're gonna go with those recommendations, okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, I got a second by Vice Chair Gonzalez. Roll call. Ramirez.
Yes.
Commissioner Arvizo.
Yes.
Commissioner Murillo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. City Engineer, appreciate your time. Um, now moving over to item number three, uh, Rancho Las Flores Park Expansion. It's beautiful too.
Yeah.
I love it, awesome.
Well, and so this is another city engineer-led project in the city, so that's why.
Andrew's doing an amazing job.
Andrew's with us today. We don't always get to have him, but we're happy to have him here present this item.
I'm glad, thank you.
Good job, Andrew.
Well, we also need to give credit to our grant. Well, we also need to give credit to our grants team. Their efforts to get funding for this, you know, all these fantastic CIPs would be moving forward.
The host staff.
And have we So this is the Rancho Las Flores Park Expansion. We received a eight and a half million dollar grant to expand a product that was originally proposed on Avenue fifty-two. That concept was not able to advance, so we were able to relocate this funding to the Rancho Las Flores expansion. This has been presented to the city council relative to discussing budgets and relative to discussing the overall scope. So we have a good concept as far as the the total concept and the, the scale of the project and how we'd like to present it. So we wanted to bring that to you today and then several of the elements will require the planning commission approval because there are structural elements that require the building and safety approvals, such as the cafe in the center and the bathroom. So I think they're going to briefly go over the, the whole park and give you concept of everything that's being placed there. And then they'll also more specifically focus on the shade structures, the cafe and the restroom structure, just so you have a good idea of what those buildings, what the architectural elements of those are going to be moving forward. So do we have a presenter, Jesse?
Hello, yes, I'm on here right now. Hey, everybody, how you guys doing? Good, good. I think I have JT too. He's the architect, so we're gonna tag team this together, I think.
Yes, I'm here as well. I work for IS Architecture.
All right, great. All right, so let's start, let's see here. Let me see, I guess maybe I'll pull up the presentation on my screen really quick. Sorry, give me one quick second.
And if we don't see anything, if you're having trouble sharing, we could use ours. And if you wanna move slides, just, just let us know.
Yeah, you know what? Can we do that? Actually, I'm sorry. Let's do that. That'd probably be better.
And then if you wanna move slides, maybe just say next along the way.
Okay, yeah. Sounds good. All right, so we can go next. Yeah, so when we started this project, you know, we, we did do some community outreach and you know, we took that into consideration when we did the design of the park. And a lot of people gravitated towards, you know, recreational activities, you know, active activities. They wanted shaded places. They were looking for music and artistic elements, native planting and really looking at the history of Coachella. We can keep going. Next. Some of the top amenities that they were looking for or that they really kind of responded to was the event area, natural play structures, a splash pad. So, you know, really what we got from this kind of community design was, you know, the community really wanted programming in their parks. And that the current phase one park maybe was more geared towards, you know, the soccer field play and league play and stuff like that. So we really wanted to kind of expand upon the programming of the park and add amenities that would kind of help the community out and kind of bring everybody together and it's in the context of Coachella and celebrate kind of the history, the arts. Looking at incorporating the regional character of the site as well. So we can go next. Some of the things that, you know, some key responses that they were looking at was more trees, different types of ball cords, fun play structures, inclusivity, wayfinding, murals, so opportunities for art, bike way to the park. So that's really kind of, that's kind of what really was in our heads when we were kind of designing this park. So we can go next. So this is kind of our, this is our site plan for the expansion of the park. And we're really kind of looking at, you know, how do we connect the already kind of what's around the park? And bring that in. So this is really kind of like a, a space, a park, that we really wanna kind of bring the community together and connect, you know, kind of different modal, transportational modal uses. So, you know, we're proposing a trail to the park. We're also looking at, you know, using, incorporating a dog park as well, because that's a new amenity that's not available by Coachella right now. Again, the kind of the cafe to kind of activate the space and keep people, you know, coming back and, you know, also kind of with our programming to, they kind of feed off of each other. So we're kind of looking at just really expanding, you know, the different types of uses and kind of what we can do in the park. And so we can go to the next one. So one idea we had was the great lawn and, you know, talking with Andrew and stuff, we really didn't want to make another soccer field. So we really wanted to make a, a vet area, an open lawn area that's, you know, more for passive uses. So families can come and play with their kids when we run around. And we also proposing, you know, playing with the with, with kind of terracing of kind of like landforms and things like that. And really kind of making it not so flat, but kind of like making, kind of giving some interest to kind of like the landscape. So we can keep going. And this is kind of a render of what that would look like. So we have a lot of shade for the residents. You know, there's also open space too, so people can play. Not so formal, like a soccer game or anything like that. So it's kind of more informal. We can keep going. This is the event lawn area. So this is really what's gonna connect the cafe, the amphitheater area, the dog park area and kind of, we're gonna keep this really open so that it's very flexible with programming. So you can have you know, pop-ups here, you know. We can have a farmer's market, so really high programmable for the city and the residents and the community. So they can really, the space is really kind of like an activation space. And we can, next one, we can kind of see how that kind of, so we go, actually, we can go into the the building right now and I think JT will take that away.
Ah, yes. So this is the cafe floor plan. And generally speaking, this cafe is kind of a vanilla box, if you, if you will. It's meant for future tenant. Right now, in the kitchen space, we do supply the bare minimum for plumbing features. So we have our three basin, the prep sink, ice and a mop sink, and also a dedicated water heater and a dedicated electrical panel. But this space is intended to be fitted out by a future tenant that the city would lease to. And as well as the cafe dining space, it's a, you know, big open space at the moment. We estimate right now, we have, we, we're seating about twenty to thirty with a concept layout. But this is, you know, like I said, more for a future tenant to fit out as they seem fit. They, they may want more counter space near the service window or less, or, you know, however they see fit. We can definitely service about twenty to thirty people inside and then there's outdoor seating as well. We do have a, a sex bathroom for staff as well that's located for the inside, so we'll be able to access that from inside the storage room. Mechanical space, of course, for the cafe mechanical. And then we have on the exterior, three individual bathrooms. All, two of them, I should say, are ADA compliant. And then the last one would be just a, a standard public restroom. And I, I believe we do have exterior images and images from the inside as well. So, they are next, next please. Yes, so this is just an inside space, the dining room. And like I said, at the moment, this is just an open, you know, open room. And we did not, we did not seem to fit it out just yet because we want future tenant to really take, take control of the space and direct that. Right now, we have lots of lights in the ceiling, but those are just pretty much to meet daylighting standards. And the, you know, future tenant can have pendants for tables, et cetera. Maybe there's booth seating on walls. But this is just so a tenant can see, you know, feel how the space is. Next. This is just an opposing side of the, of the dining room as well. As you can see, we just have lots of glass, lots of light, you know, really open, beautiful just dining space. Then I, I feel like there's a lot of flexibility here and, you know, a tenant would eagerly want to fill this space. Next, please. And then, yeah, just like we said before, this is just, it keeps, keeps the idea of what's going on inside for future tenants. You can kind of get a sneak peek of the outside where there is overhead trellis structure and outdoor seating and an arcade. The, the building's inspiration, we took a lot of inspiration from buildings just throughout Coachella. Lots of arcades and the tones of the colors were inspired from the city hall. And it's just, I think this will be a great area in the, the general park for people to come, get to grab, you know, grab a bite to eat, sit outside. There's a stair ramp like Jesse was saying that connects to the lawn space. It's just gonna be a really nice area for the community to come, grab a bite to eat, you know, socialize, see an event and, you know, just have a great night, great day. Really excited for something like this to come to fruition. Next, please. Yeah, we're just ending it with, they're, they're kind of just basic images, but we just want to get the future tenant, you know, inspired more or less to, to see what's, you know, the possibilities of this room. And, yeah, next, please.
Yeah, and this is just a, yeah, it's just a
Your image of the stair ramp. And yeah, Jesse, if you want to continue, please.
Sure, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so this is really kind of just, you know, again, you know, bridging that gap between the kind of event area and the cafe and really just kind of, you know, bringing the outside in and the inside out. Yeah, so this is just kind of a place where you can really hang out and it should be a great spot for everybody, for a community. I think it's gonna be a really great amenity for the community of Coachella. And we go next. Again, that's, this is just looking out west, so it's a really large kind of open area. So you can, you know, you can picture having concerts here or, you know, farmers markets or kind of community events, city events, anything really, very flexible. And then we can go next. And this is looking east towards the cafe. So again, that connectivity and just people kind of enjoying the space. And we can go next. And then again, so we're kind of an offshoot of the cafe. So we again, want to really keep it highly programmable. So, you know, we, this is kind of, we got really kind of at the alignment. We have the event lawn and then below it, we have like the play areas for the children. We got kind of this more passive Coachella Bay lawn area. And then right next to it is the splash pad area with shade. Again, we want to keep it close to the cafe. That way, you know, parents can, you know, if they need to take the kids to the restroom, it's, you know, it's really, it's really close in proximity. And then we can kind of keep going. And then it's kind of a perspective of the splash pad area. Again, this is kind of, you know, really, it's, it's really amenity for the community and, you know, just different use of space. And again, just looking at different types of play, different types of jets. And it also has a nighttime component to it too, where the, the, the jets will actually light up at night. So we kind of different colors. So again, not just looking at during the day, but also at night too. And then keeping, keeping that going. And then we go next. And again, this is the play area. So we really are looking at, you know, using landforms and playing with the forms of the earth to kind of create these kind of, you know, interesting spaces and kind of challenge kids a little bit, but also trying to be inclusive too. So adding kind of more plant material that's more flowering in this area too, for, you know, sensory needs and looking at different textures on the ground too. So keep, 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 yeah, sorry. It'll keep kids interested and just kind of exploring the space really. So we can go next. And again, this is kind of just a little bit more of a informal lawn area. So again, it's highly programmable. You can have different types of games out here. You know, just parents to relax and sit while they watch their kids play. And then again, that close proximity to the cafe. You know, I think those two uses go really well together. So we can keep going. This is the dog park area too. Again, so we're keeping it two dog parks. So one for larger dogs, one for smaller dogs. Again, this is looking, we're playing with landforms here too for, just to do different activities and just to help dogs train. And then we can keep going. Next one, we see a perspective of that, how that kind of plays out. So again, you know, just trying to make, you know, having fun with it. And just kind of adding different agility obstacles for the dogs, you know, and and their owners too. So we can keep going. And this is the, the stormwater basin. So we really kind of want to keep all the water on site and treated. So we're kind of thinking about, you know, stormwater management and, you know, again, working with the civil engineers, we're kind of grading it so that all the water drains to this area here. And again, we also want to make it you know, multi-use. So, you know, you can bring kids here from school so they can learn about, you know, different plants, learn the process of treating water. And we can keep going. We can see a render of what kind of it looks like. So again, yeah, so it's just kind of, we're gonna really make it like the planting drought tolerant. So it teaches kids about how to save water and then looking at, you know, introducing plants too that will have wildlife in it. And just, again, this is a great place for families to come and learn. We can keep going. So this is the outdoor fitness and spiral walk site plan. So this is really kind of, again, celebrating the art and the history of Coachella and kind of what came before. So we keep going. This is kind of the outdoor fitness area. So again, you know, listening to the community about shade. You know, we don't want anybody working out in the hot sun, so we provided apple shade trees, different types of fitness equipment for different levels. So people can really kind of use this space. And again, just another great amenity for this park and the community. And we keep going. And then adding kind of different types of play too as well, or different types of exercise. So rock climbing walls kind of lends itself well to this and especially to considering the region, just a different alternative, you know, workout. So we can keep going. And this is the spiral walk area. So this is kind of the area where, you know, it's more quiet. And, you know, there's opportunities here for art. So you can definitely work with the planning commission to kind of get local artists to, you know, celebrate the history of Coachella. And then just providing the opportunity to do that, I think it'd be great. And then another kind of learning for families and children too to come out here and just kind of learn about the history of the city. And then keep going. And again, we're, we're really kind of looking at the infrastructure of the city. And on the east side, there's existing bike lane that really doesn't kind of go anywhere. It kind of just ends right there. So we really want to kind of bring that through with this trail. And then connect it to the, kind of the rest of the, the park. And then also to, to Van Buren where, you know, there's gonna be other art and music line too. So we're really looking at kind of, you know, making this a connector space and bringing people in, you know. You know, making this a connector space and bringing people in, you know, with bikes and walking. And also wanting to connect to to the community that's just south of the park too, so they can come and have more accessibility and um. I think that's just, you know, again, this park is just really about bringing people together. And then we can keep going. And again, we really wanna celebrate kind of the history of of Coachella, so and art. And we're kind of looking at, you know, we were really inspired by kind of the sunset and the kind of the mountain. Uh, ridgeline of of the backdrop of Coachella, so we kind of wanna incorporate that and kind of really um direct people. Uh, that way and kind of, you know, celebrate the identity of Coachella this way. And we can keep going. And just kind of render what that would look like, so when you enter the park, you're gonna see this. Um, and again, I think it just brings identity to the park and, you know, it's just gonna become a great, you know. Amenity and space for the community. And then we can keep going, and then that's it.
Thank you so much for your presentation and Mr. Simmons, thank you, excellent job. All right, we can open up for some questions from this commission and it's our m- Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi, hi again. Awesome job, again, beautiful, beautiful project, um, everything about it and just. How we're touching so many elements, amazing. But um, just one quick question, going back to the cafe lawn.
Yes.
So I understand it's again, operator, you know, it's it's gonna be in the middle of the park, pretty inside. My, I just, I want whoever the operator is to be successful, so in the event we don't find the right operator or whatever the case. Could the kitchen be used for like events or as a ghost kitchen as well as an alternative, or does it have to be an operator? Just wanna be clear about that.
Um, I mean, the goal for this is to have a permanent commercial tenant. Uh, we want that to be a draw for the park, so we want that to be um. And we want it to be a successful operation as well, so um the goal for that to be seven days a week. Regular operating hours, you know, uh, so we would put out a an RFP. To local businesses to come and operate that as a as a full-time kind of park cafe.
Understood, but in the event, let's say we open up in twenty twenty seven, right? And let's say we don't find one, we can't find one, but we want some options there. Can we open it up to. An alternative while we find a permanent solution? Could it be used for as a ghost kitchen or as something else? Just curious.
I mean, that hasn't been discussed. I mean, if we did not receive any RFPs or if we didn't have any interest in operating that business, then. Then yes, we would seek alternative.
Okay, in the event, it's just that I'm thinking from a business perspective, you know, it's like you gotta be the right fit, you know, and uh to attract. You know, people inside to La Flores, you know, to get in there to have a reason, right? Um, cuz, yeah, I just, I just want, I wanna be a good business partner as well and and bring something really nice to our community, right? But I just wanna make sure we have alternatives in the event that we don't have. A permanent solution, that's all.
Absolutely, and if uh if you don't mind me commenting a little bit, that this JT from IS Architecture. Um, the only, the only thing that I see is that one of the benefits of leaving the the cafe kind of. As this vanilla box at the moment, I think we'll we'll be able to get. A variety of future tenants or at least uh, you know, prep prep kitchens versus non-prep kitchens and. There's just, there's just a lot of options by leaving it, you know, as this blank slate at the moment. And I think that will be a a reason to attract future tenants, so I have, I have a positive, posi- positivity, you know. Or positive look, I should say, going forward by leaving this in such a blank slate. And I do wanna assure you that the parking lot is really respectively, it's relatively close to the cafe. It is not far and there is a, you know, there's a a soft ramp, if you will, leading towards it, so it's it's uh. I can assure a future tenant will not have, you know, access problems by any means, by, you know, loading in. Product or anything like that. We have a a side access door to the kitchen, you know, we we. We wanna make sure that we were taking all those things into account as well while designing, you know, in the broad scheme of the park as well.
Okay, thank you.
I anticipate we'll get a lot of interest.
Yeah.
The goal is to have it be a symbiotic relationship with the overall park. We really want, you know, the park to drive business to the cafe and cafe to drive business to the to the park. Um, and, you know, the event space and being able to have a cafe immediately adjacent to a highly activated event space. Uh, so I'm, we anticipate they will get a lot of interest, but we have put a lot of thought into the interior and I will set that up. As a shell space with all of the necessary amenities, um, but still leaving enough of a shell so that a tenant can come in and really personalize that and make that. Um, maximize their operational efficiencies and how they'll use that space.
Yeah, vanilla shape or shell shape is always the best way to go, so, but thank you for that, just, just as an alternative in the event.
Yes.
Contingency.
Thank you so much. Any further questions?
No, thank you.
Awesome. Commissioner Isbo.
Um. Just something, just because it wasn't brought up, I love the idea of using the natural earth, right, and going um. With that sort of landscape and everything, um, especially like with the doggy park, cuz I know that residents have been asking for that for a while, um. But with that comes the thought of making sure that. We are also including a lot of different um like potty back stations, um, so that. Residents are being responsible and picking up after the, after their pets, right? Um, so ensuring that that's everywhere and if it's a place where we're going to be inviting animals, we're there to also be um. I'm not sure, I can't think of the city that does this, but there's a. When you do like the water fountain, there's a a type of feature that has the dog. Mm-hmm, the doggy fountain, um, both for those to be placed all over the park, um. And then leading into that, um, I know that the arts and music line was mentioned. And so that's definitely a good way to get traffic through there, right, and thinking about how can we work together to to get that there. Um, a lot of folks are very excited to start using the CV link, which is gonna be, and then the arts and music leg is gonna be that extension. Um, and so I did see that there was going to be an area for bicycles, but kind of pushing on that and. Expanding on it being kind of like a pit stop and hydration station for folks to be able to fill up their water bottles. Um, for, you know, the kids who are going to be on what their scooters, skateboards, whatever, be it, right? For it to really be that go-to place and then continue to promote um. Getting business to whoever is going to set up there. Um, but just, I know that it seems like this, that's, that's the way that the thinking that was, that was happening around this. Um, but um, that's, I'm so glad that that arts and music line was mentioned, cuz it's definitely, um. Yeah, they will be pulling a lot of folks, especially from the um west side of the valley, um, as they're excited to kind of start coming this way. Um, some things that I did see a lot of shading. Which is amazing because we know it gets hot, um, but with that, it's also considering um. Expanding on what city initiatives have already have already been put in place, like planting fruit trees. And considering adding some of those elements.
Oh, cool.
Um, so that as people are strolling through the park, there there was a mention of the farmer's market and everything, but for it to also be a spot. Where people go and they know that, oh, I can go find some lemons, I can go find some lines. Um, but for it to be that, um, I know that the trees still have long to go, the ones that were planted alongside Avenue fifty three, right? Um, but some of the issues that have led to that, the stunted growth is definitely the sun that we get out here, right? So we know that this is gonna be an area that's gonna have a lot of that shady. This could definitely be a place where that would bloom.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but and then plus adding to that, I see that there was a lot of shade structure added, but if we could consider adding mid, like misting. The little, what are they? Yeah, they are the misters, because I would hate to see this park empty in the summer. We know that it's hot and it gets very unbearable out here, but just to kind of consider that. Um, but other than that, everything is amazing. I love the mention of working with local artists, um, working with the um. The Arts Commission to try to get some of that artwork there, um, and overall, it's just a really, a really good um plan.
Awesome. Any further questions, comments?
No.
Awesome. Commissioner, what are you?
Yes, um, I did see that there will be restrooms in the cafe and restaurant, it says an additional restroom near. Um. The Great Lawn. Are there gonna be any additional restrooms? Will it be restrooms like in every section or only in those places?
No, just the two restrooms, so the restroom of the cafe is kind of central to the new addition and the other restroom is um. Kind of right at the dividing point between the old park and the new park.
Yeah.
Currently, the uh park only has the restrooms all over Van Van Buren. So the future park with the full expansion would have three sets of restrooms, so the. One towards the middle and the cafe provides you the restrooms that are more towards the east.
Okay, and um I did notice that there was a voice for concern about um inclusivity and um. Like a play yard for children with with disability, would that be included as well? Is in the um, in the rendering, I see that there's like a lot of like mountains and everything, but.
Yeah, there's, there's two uh play areas, so kind of the, I think the rendering is focused on the um. Kind of lar- the larger kid.
Large ones, okay.
And then there's a smaller play area behind it that would be uh. Have access for the uh children's disabilities as well.
Thank you.
Any further comments, questions, sir? All right, Vice Chairman Zos.
Yes, can I get a little more vivid description of how the amphitheater will function? And exactly where. You're thinking of putting the bands or the performers on, that's on the on the lawn areas, are correct?
Yeah, so the way it works is the great lawn acts as a.
Can we get it on the screen, please?
Can we bring up the picture?
He wants to see the plugs for the speaker, so we can rock on.
And then also a ladder for the retrieving the dates.
Exactly.
Um, so this one kind of shows the, that space that's in that's to the left of the screen. Um, that would be west of the event lawn, that's a raised platform.
Okay.
With the shade structures both sides, so that way you can actually activate from either side. Depending on how you're going to set that event up. Um, and the, what we're calling the great lawn, which is the kind of more open grass area. Potentially building hills in that area. You can see here the raised platform is on the east side. Um, so we intentionally have this, um, we're gonna have that be a landform, or that's a raised up. Yeah, and that way you have a good view of that entire platform from anywhere on either the great lawn or the event lawn.
So what did you guys raise it, four feet, ten feet, six feet?
Um. Look at the grade line, it's not that high, it's not ten.
Apparently, it's uh, it's about seven.
Five feet high.
Yeah, it's about seven, five to seven feet.
Well, that's good, that's perfect.
Um, and the goal is for that to be visible from the entire event lawn, so I mean, you'd be able to set up. Uh, we had the nice rendering from the, if someone was standing at the cafe. Looking across the event lawn, you can kind of see how that would act as a stage in the background.
You know, I have a detail on those, cuz I was kind of confused on it, but that's nice, if it's five, seven feet, that's, that's, that's perfect, I think. Yeah, nice, uh, the whole project is nice, I like it.
I'm excited.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions?
Thank you.
All right, awesome. I just have a couple, uh, what I I did not, I did not see on um. Uh, surrounding the uh the dog park, any, any gates? So are we planning on having that enclosed area?
Yeah, those are fully enclosed.
Okay, perfect.
It's going to the very first picture, the one that has to be.
Okay, perfect, so it is enclosed. And then uh another question, another comment would be.
The large dogs and small dogs are separated.
Okay, perfect. And it's all gated, right? So you can let your dog run wild in there, correct?
Yes.
All right, perfect. And then um maybe perhaps, I don't know if this is gonna break the budget, but maybe perhaps one self-clean restroom.
Uh, self-cleaning restroom.
Yeah, you see it a lot in big, big metropolitan cities, right, where you go in there, you shut the door and it's gonna clean itself. Like af- after. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, right, just like maybe perhaps one, maybe located in the middle of the park, like just, yeah, the way can always be cleaned. Well, I'm just saying, it's beautiful here. But uh, and then uh, the, the third and last final con. Would be um perhaps if we could possibly include, you know, multiple outlets throughout the park, right? So around the the vet lawn area. Where if, say, for instance, we have, you know, people show up with boobs, et cetera, right, or we have some informational gathering that they could. You know, plug in for some electricity there.
Yeah, def- definitely around the event lawn, that'll be fully wired with with outlets around the entire space. Um, if we go to the picture of the event lawn, you can see there is intentionally a concrete walkway that encircles the entire thing. Um, and there would be outlets along that perimeter, so that. You know, allows you to set booths around the entire edge and and have that be a good activated space, but we will accommodate. Our needs for advancement in that area.
Perfect, awesome. This is, I think you guys done, you guys knocked it out of the park. This is an excellent project, ex- excellent presentation as well. Any further comments, questions for Mr. Simmons and his team?
We're done, we're good.
We're good?
Yeah.
Awesome, all right, so it, it's with uh the DAS, I can make a recommendation for. Um, the design to head to the city council.
Yes. I second that.
Okay. Motion. Can we get a motion first?
Yes, motion.
Well, I said, would somebody like to tell us? So.
I'll motion to move this uh agenda item to city council for approval.
Perfect, can we get a roll call, please? Okay, uh, Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Commissioner Arvizo.
Yes.
Commissioner Murillo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Chair Hernandez. Yes, sir, thank you so much, all right. Great job, thank you so much, Mr. Simmons. Uh, now moving over to item number four, the Pueblo Viejo Downtown Parking Survey Update, point twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Chair and uh members of the Plank Commission. So uh we will have Vanessa Sanchez Mesash, she's been our intern for how many months already?
Five, six months.
Six months, so she'll be wrapping up her internship soon. We actually thought this was gonna be her last week, but she's gonna be with us another uh month. So that's good news for us, uh, but what we wanted to make part of the experience is the opportunity to present in front of the Plank Commission. And so you may, some of you have seen the parking studies that we would present to the commission. We did update this recently and she'll present the results.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Plank Commission, my name is Vanessa Sanchez. I'm entering before you's item number four, the Pueblo Viejo Downtown Parking Study Update. For the future management of existing parking supply. For some background, the intent of this study is to determine the parking occupancy in the downtown district. And to decide on a solution for full parking space occupancy. Parking occupancy is considered full when it exceeds eighty percent. And the first parking study was conducted in October twenty nineteen. And since twenty twenty-two, the study has been conducted annually. We're hoping that our next update will be for spring of twenty twenty-five. And the study is intended to provide the. Provide findings and recommendations to understand potential parking supply and demand. To determine right-sized parking standards to ensure both workable development scenarios. And effective operations as well as managing future parking supply and demand through efficient strategies. And use of existing supply. Some study recommendations that we have are. Cooperative parking management, which both city and property owners cooperate to utilize off-street parking. Uh, two signage and user information. Which is utilizing signage to redirect visitors to available parking spaces as a useful tool to avoid congestion. Number three, time-restricted parking. Which is to increase turnover rate for the prime on-street and off-street parking supply. Number four, temporary and overflow parking. Uh, the city makes arrangements with private parking owners and schools to utilize their parking in case of overflow. For example, uh, for city events, we can require a leasing agreement. And number five, we could do paid parking. Number six, bicycle parking. Uh, we could provide a safe and convenient biking and walking experience for viable choice. And some other recommendations that continue are effective use of leftover space in the downtown vacant lots. Number eight, converting parallel parking to angled parking.
Hmm.
Um, employee parking, which encourages employees to park on their designated parking spaces. And the last recommendation is shared centralized parking structure. This would be the last alternative, as it could be very costly. And just to go back in time, the parking study twenty twenty-two outcome. The Parking Study twenty twenty two outcome, we implemented two parking spaces in front of the library. With fifteen minute time restricted parking signs. And they're still there today. And for the parking study done last year. In March twenty and April twenty first, this parking survey demonstrated that parking is abundant. Throughout the downtown district. The parking studies' observation days were chosen specifically to evaluate any impact from the Coachella Festival. And the parking occupancy observes highest on the Sixth Street segment at eighty nine percent. Uh, for this year's parking study. Uh, the first study was conducted on Wednesday, November twentieth, twenty twenty four. This would be Observation Day one. The second study was conducted on Saturday, November twenty third, twenty twenty four, Observation Day two. Uh, these observation days were chosen to see what an average day of parking looks like in our downtown. And both were conducted between the hours of seven A M to five P M. The area of the study included the entirety of the downtown from First Streets and Ninth Street. As shown in this Parking Study Project Area Map. Uh, the study was organized uh through numbered blocks. We also use these maps for the on-street parking occupancy to keep track, as well as the off-street parking occupancy map. And going into the more like uh concerning blocks. Uh, Sixth Street between Orchard and Vine Street. Observation Day one on Wednesday showed that peak parking occupancy occurred at eleven A M at ninety five percent. Lowest parking occupancy occurred at five P M at forty two percent. Observation Day two, peak parking occupancy occurred at nine A M at sixty eight percent. The lowest parking occupancy occurred at seven A M and five P M at forty two percent. And then for the entirety of Sixth Street between Severo Chavez and Grapefruit. Observation Day one, peak parking occupancy occurred at nine A M and eleven A M at forty eight percent. The lowest parking occupancy occurred at five P M at twenty seven percent. Observation Day two, peak parking occupancy occurred at nine A M at forty two percent. And lowest parking occupancy occurred at seven A M at nineteen percent. For the library block, block six. Observation Day one, peak parking occupancy occurred at eleven eight A M at eighty percent. Lowest parking occupancy occurred at five P M at twenty six percent. Observation Day two, peak parking occupancy occurred at eleven A M at forty six percent. And the lowest parking occupancy occurred at five P M at eighteen percent. For Veterans Park Block Five, Observation Day one, peak parking occupancy occurred at three P M at fifty two percent. Lowest parking occupancy occurred at five P M at twenty eight percent. And Observation Day two, peak parking occupancy occurred at eleven A M at fifty five percent. And the lowest parking occupancy occurred at seven A M at twenty two percent. And for the Palm View Elementary School, Block eleven, Observation Day one, peak parking occupancy occurred at nine A M at sixty one percent. Lowest parking occupancy occurred at seven A M at ten percent. Observation Day two, peak parking occupancy occurred at seven P M at thirteen percent. And the lowest parking occupancy occurred at eleven A M at one percent. In conclusion, for the total parking occupancy, uh Wednesday showed that the. Peak occupancy in the downtown district occurs at eleven A M at forty seven percent. And uh Observation Day two, on a Saturday, the. Uh, peak occupancy occurred at eleven A M at thirty percent. And overall, this November survey showed that the highest average. Um, in the downtown district was at thirty six percent on November twentieth. And last year's March study was an average of thirty four percent for parking space occupancy, so there's been a two percent increase. Uh, the parking occupancy is observed highest on the Sixth Street segment between Orchard and Vine Street. At ninety five percent during lunchtime hours. And no other areas in the downtown district exceeded the eighty percent parking capacity in our downtown. And here's just a timeline of Sixth Street. Uh, the segment between Or- Orchard and Vine Street throughout the years. On Monday, twenty twenty two, it exceeded the eighty percent capacity um. In the late evening at five P M. Tuesday, twenty twenty three, it exceeded the eighty percent at one to three P M. Friday, twenty twenty three, it exceeded the eighty percent at nine A M. And then for this year, on Wednesday, it exceeded the eighty percent around nine to eleven A M. And on Saturday, it did not exceed eighty percent. And so it's just good to look at how on Wednesday, uh it starts. To get pretty close to the eighty percent right at seven A M. Up until one P M and starts going back down, and then the downtown area is. Uh, pretty. Gets pretty empty. And on the day. Uh, staff recommendations, the planning commission might consider recommending options to manage parking on Sixth Street segment. From eight A M to five P M, Monday through Friday, since it has demonstrated the highest occupancy rate through. How our observation exceeding the eighty percent occupancy threshold. Since the study has determined that we do not have any parking issues, we can utilize option six from the recommended options. To better manage our parking parking occupancy on the Sixth Street segment. And just to refresh, option six is the signage and user information. Which is to utilize signage to redirect visitors to available parking spaces as a useful tool to avoid congestion here on Sixth Street. And that's the end of my presentation. I will gladly take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, all right, any questions for uh Ms. Sanchez Mesa and staff?
I think it's a good recommendation to have signage just to redirect folks when that moment in time on Sixth Street gets congested. So I agree with that recommendation.
Yeah, so, um, you, anybody else want to weigh in?
I also like the idea of assigned player parking. I think it makes it easier for them and for people visiting.
Yeah, truly. You don't know?
Uh, the recommendation, I mean, it makes sense. You've covered everything. Thank you for that, very detailed. But yeah, and I know that the fifteen minutes has been, it seems like it's been helpful. Uh, we could kind of guess the hours that are busy, right? And why it's busy, folks want their coffee. Um, and so they're stopping there, so yeah. That's it.
Well, sure.
Yeah, thank you, very, very pleasure, very true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, and I just want to congratulate you. Great job on your presentation.
So much.
Yeah.
Thank you to my planning team for guiding me and helping me out with this presentation. It's been really fun being here at Coachella.
Nice, we wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
You so much.
Thank you.
So are you in Coachella, not coming back?
Sorry?
Are you leaving Coachella, not coming back?
Alrighty, so uh we'd like to motion to recommend option six, right? Sign uh signage and user information, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Awesome, perfect, can we get a roll call, please?
Uh, Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Arvisu?
Yes.
Commissioner Murillo?
Yes.
Alternative, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you so much, all right, um. And in item number four, right, uh, there are. Public care, public caring calendar, quite the judicial, is there any items on this? Seeing that there are none, ignore the informational portion?
Uh, just a few, I'll make this pretty quick. Uh, so we did hire a principal planner, so they'll start in January. So this will be helpful, because sometimes you'll you'll see the agenda sometimes on Saturday. So this will actually help in terms of some of our staffing needs in the city as we grow. Obviously, you can see there's amazing projects happening all over the city and. Um, Andrew's only covered a few of them, I mean, there's a ton more coming next year, so. Uh, that's gonna be exciting. Um, I do want to report that the city did submit the the application to LAFCO. For the Pocket Seven area of the city. And so we anticipate some decision on that this next year, maybe in the springtime. Uh, the food truck ordinance was passed by the city council, and just an update from the last planning commission meeting. We were able to get the criteria from the blue zones. Um, and so that is gonna be part of the criteria for the food trucks, where it's the twenty five percent of the menu. Um, one of the things that was deleted, just so you are aware of, is the service of alcohol in the beef farms. So just want to let you know, that was the change that they did make. Uh, but it does have to go back to second meeting. And it probably wouldn't be an effect until the middle of February.
Now, if someone wanted to have alcohol, they have to do especially event permit or that work.
By especially event permit or some kind of entertainment permit, which is also a long-term permit as well. Um, so we, just so you know, this Friday is the last day to fill out the survey. For the Coachella Passenger Row. Um, so this is to provide feedback on the station, but also the three different options. So there's like a north, like a downtown option, there's a south option, so. You haven't filled out that survey, um, your input's gonna be very important to share with others.
Director, is that link available in the City Coachella website, correct?
It's on the website, so under Development Service, it's the first link, and there's a lot of other information on there as well, so you can access that. Um, also, if you want to share it with others that you know, it has been posted on the city's social media. So please share it if you can. Um, lastly, I just want to. Application and you want to be on the planning commission again, please do submit that. Um, and I think that's about it. So this is our last meeting, so just want to thank the planning commission for a good job. There's been a lot of great projects that have become before you, and I look forward to. Some, I don't know if this is gonna be the last meeting for some of you or not, so it's hard to tell, to say at this point. But um, you know, if it is, I want to thank you for all your dedication to the city. Uh, if it isn't, then we'll continue to work together next year.
Awesome, thank you so much, Mr. Director. Does anybody have any closing comments for the director?
So you said February was a render- rendering from LAFCO, is that correct?
Uh, I don't know when LAFCO will make their decision. I anticipate it's gonna be late spring. So it's whatever their process is, but they they're thinking it's maybe May.
So what's the, what's, what do we do on the next phase of LAFCO?
Um, so what would happen?
What's they do, once they make this decision?
Oh, yeah, so once they make the decision, then it would officially be considered part of the boundaries of the City of Coachella.
Okay.
And uh, so we'll provide updates along the way.
So I think one of the things we need to work on too is also, obviously, the. The domicile of CB Unified School District, because it's still considered terminal, and it's actually in the jurisdiction of Coachella. And then hopefully we could move on to the next phase, LAFCO phase, because I think that's very important for the city and our community. That we continue to pursue uh all these LAFCO endeavors that that uh, myself personally, I think that. Some of the projects, the properties that aren't part of the city, we need to remain, be part of our city. So, just want to make those comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I just want to say thank you to the staff and interns and everyone for your support. For supporting the diocese, and I also want to, you know, thank my colleagues. It's been a really nice, you know. It's been really nice serving and learning and growing and contributing to our community, so thank you for that, thank you everyone.
Yeah, all the commissioners, amazing job.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else before? All right, I just want to echo Commissioner Ramirez's um. Comments and her sentiment. Yeah, congratulations, you know, you guys have done a great job. And uh, you know, this this job here sometimes goes um. Unrewarded, right? To, there's a lot of sacrifices that 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 staff make, right, to be here. And to be able to do this job, and so on behalf of myself, I just want to thank you for your time, your dedication to the city. And if it wasn't for you, uh, we wouldn't be where we're at today, right? And there's a lot of great things um coming for the city, um, and that's due to your dedication and the work that you do for the city. And so, Mr. Director, thank you so much. Mr. City Engineer, thank you so much. Um, Mr. I T guy, thank you so much. Our legal counsel, thank you so much, and before before we depart, I just want to wish everyone a. Happy holiday and Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year, so. Twenty twenty five is is ours for the taking. And I'd like to adjourn at seven twenty one.
Thank you.
Thank you.